Reporting, alright, uh, just calling to order the uh, Portage Township monthly meeting of November eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, first do a quick roll call, Ryan Hill here.
Cheryl Ash here.
Muhammad Shabab here.
Alright, and approval of agenda?
I make the motion that we approve the agenda.
I second.
Alright, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the approval of the minutes, were there any uh, changes needed that need to solve for the minutes? I would say.
I didn't see anything.
I didn't see anything.
I make the motion to pass till through the minute.
I second.
October twenty first.
I second.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, all in favor of approving the minutes, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alright, so we wanna open up for public comment, is there anybody on the Zoom line?
Just AI listening.
Concerned. Got it. Alright, so with no members of the public here to comment, we'll go ahead and close this.
Does have a signature pageant.
Okay, new business.
It does.
Time to check deadlines.
If they want.
Okay.
Um, so you guys have seen this a few times, we didn't print it out again to save the paper, um, but we have a copy here and a couple copies floating around here. Uh, Cheryl did return um, a lot of edits and comments if she had a meeting with the staff, they reviewed them, we've accepted all of them. Um, Cheryl, just for your edification, some of those were duplicates.
Okay.
Things we'd already added in there based on your review before.
Okay.
I was saying, Lana, I was like, we already added this, she said this.
But we did.
Um, but we added uh, everything in there that about you suggested, but I don't know if you wanna go over any highlights for for them.
No, cause I don't remember what I suggested.
I don't think it's gonna be anything they object, I think.
I said yes.
It was stuff we've heard probably before. Um, was, you know, when it comes to making someone sell their assets. Clarifying language around that we obviously don't, don't, you know, do that, make you sell money rings and such. Um, we changed, we made sure S S D I was included in many places.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we clarified language around, uh, oh, state statutes. We made sure that we lead off, um, the very beginning, you'll notice it says that these are, we are basically guided by state laws here. That's a big thing for Cheryl when she's out in the community, she points out that, and we do the same, and we have to point out to folks that we're having to follow state laws here, so. Um, we made those additions in there, um, yeah, nothing else too breaking, I suppose. Just various things for clarity.
We had talked in the past about uh, edit, so I haven't had a chance to really go through any changes or anything. Um, but just regarding um, thoughts for disability, making sure that's listed in here, that that's not factored in.
We did that at that time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we made that change that year, um, so that was, uh, that is in our conversion. That we exclude expenses related to a disability as part of your income.
Okay.
That's what you're thinking.
Right.
And we made real clear that if you're eighteen and enrolled in school.
That you, yeah, you do not have to be.
Any of the thing the state requires you to do.
Correct, yeah, that that's made clear, actually several places we made that update.
And does it mention in here the issue of um, domestic violence for people when we're checking their income or they're leaving, trying to get help after an incident?
Uh, no, there's nothing about domestic violence, we do um, put in notes that we don't hold it against you for legal fees if it's related to you defending yourself, if you you've not been found guilty of something.
What do you mean?
Those were Cheryl's. Remember that one Cheryl?
If somebody's a victim of a domestic violence.
Right, I mean, I remember one of the issues is having, right, you have to go down to relatives or others asking for
Right.
child support things.
No, we in fact had, uh, if I may really quick, we had a case this last week or so, a woman came in that had, I believe, five or six children, her husband. Yeah, there's a P O against him now, there's a domestic violence case, she brought it in, in fact, she came in, I was working in here on Veterans Day. And uh, I was, I saw her and I I thought she was chopping up paperwork, but she was, and I was going through things with her. And yeah, there were certain things she couldn't get or whatever, something like that, because he's locked up now, you could tell she was very fearful. She's trying to get things changed around in her name, and so, yeah, we were, we were basically, Ryan, we didn't go back to ask.
But it's part of the processes in the office, if, you know, if somebody's a victim of domestic violence, we're not gonna send them back to their husband to get income.
Or even there, you're gonna get child support at this time, well, he's in the, they're in the throes of all that, we don't. There's grace given for all that, cause they're in the middle of a
Yes.
huge crisis, and we were with this woman.
But it is a good thing to note that in here.
I don't know what we would say, though, I mean, I'm open to.
Because the law says, the state law says you have to go after child support, right?
So we couldn't put unless you're a victim of domestic violence. We, in practice, that is what we do, but I just, I don't know if we could put that in there.
But the state requires you, the state does not give any allowance for domestic violence.
They give discretion.
Right, to the office.
Yeah, so yeah, if you suggest language.
Um.
You could just put out the discretion.
At the discretion of the trustee.
In in the situations of, uh, um, in situations of abuse or violence, discretion may be made at requiring any kind of contact. Or something along those lines. Uh, I just imagine people like flipping through like, oh, no, I'm not gonna do this, cause that's gonna put me at risk if they don't see something in there. It does say at the discretion of the township trustee, but maybe noting that would be one thing.
And then for two thousand twenty six, I would like us to work on for two thousand twenty seven, a way that if I loan you money and uh, um, and then I pay you back out of my taxes or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's something I'd like us to work on for twenty twenty seven. Because let's be honest, you don't pay that person back, they'll never loan you money again, and that's your
Mm-hmm.
that's your bank almost.
Mm-hmm.
Cause you you don't have good enough credit to get a loan from the bank. We really don't want people going to the payday loan places. And uh, because a payday loan place would count, right, as a legitimate expense, if you owe.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, 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 we have to figure out a good process.
So we've gotta, I'd like us to do that in two thousand twenty six.
You know, that's a good one, for sure. So are we wanting to table this and not pass it tonight?
Do you want to table until they had the domestic violence thing, or that's something that could be added?
Just add.
Add it after, you could pass it with that being added, but it's up to you, do you got, with the note that that should be added, that language should be added.
I mean, I I make the motion to pass it.
With.
What, yeah, with, with.
Limit, limit.
Yeah, you could do that.
Okay, I second.
Or we could delay him up.
I second.
Alright, fine with that, uh, all in favor of passing the two thousand twenty six Township Assistance Guidelines guidelines with the proposed amendment to edit the language on uh, child support and potential about some violations, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I, there is one thing about burial, I'm looking, it may be backfired.
That's it.
Yeah, I know.
No, I just, no, hold on, hold on, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
We have it here, they have to apply if they qualify for Medicaid Assistant for burial, don't we?
Yeah, and when they, when they're Medicaid eligible, that takes us out of the equation.
Okay.
Cause they pay more.
Yeah, they can actually, yeah, they can do a lot more.
Yes, they can.
And we do make sure, cause usually it's the Yeah, cause they want more money anyways.
They want more money, yeah.
They'd be glad to try them first.
I mean, that, they're not in business of
Move that resolution twenty three dash.
This one?
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad that you all added.
You know what?
Um, the, what do you call it, wherever the laws were, I'm glad, cause people are always asking me, well, where is that in the law?
Yeah, I
And it just makes it so much easier, I'm just talking about in general, it makes it so much easier.
Be under standards, eligibility and procedures. Now says assistance and Portage Township administered in accordance to the standards duly adopted by the Township Code and required by the state of Indiana.
Right, and I'm really glad about that.
Alright, so resolution twenty two dash twenty twenty five is uh, requesting the disposition of surplus personal property. The fire department has a nineteen ninety five GMC utility plow truck. Um, that is obviously pretty damn old, they don't need it anymore, it's kind of just sitting around and it can be used for other things, so. Um, because it has a value of some kind, um, the fire tier, we had the Fire Territory Board pass this same resolution, now asking the township to pass this resolution. Because it was owned by Portage Township.
Okay.
Um, so really, this is just the op op, this is so that we can put it out for bids, we will be taking bids for somebody to buy it. There are some firemen that are interested in it, but they would have to submit sealed bids, um, I think Sammy to the Territory Board? Is that what we said? The the bids, where they were going to, the the Territory Board's gonna open them? I thought so, so we were waiting for Portage Township to take action on this before that those bids could go out.
Well, I, but, I, whatever the word say that resolution twenty two twenty five be voted on?
Let's ask second.
Uh, yeah, all in favor of twenty two day twenty twenty five?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's all the new business.
Don't you get papers first, please?
No, oh, oh, I'm sorry, does anybody have a plan?
Yeah.
With that, that's my search.
Just as a note, it would be helpful if we could figure out where the listed here.
The disability piece?
Yeah.
Sounds, yeah, should be under income.
This one too?
Mm-hmm, definitely, yes, thank you.
Uh, okay, that's, yeah.
Expenditures for, it's under expenditures.
Yeah, I see that.
Basic necessities that are required. And it was on there.
Um, okay, anyways.
Yeah, done the new bit.
Wait, you need to sign that out?
Yeah, I have issues with my pen, it's kind of a new pen, so I'm irritated, um, anyways, uh, trustees report?
Oh my god.
No, old business, sorry.
Ten problems.
What is? I know. I got this from that.
I don't ever have that. Yeah, no, so trustees report, uh.
No business?
Oh, no, there's no. Yeah. Uh, you have your budget here, um, this as is as a reminder that we are going to have to pass additional appropriations in December, thank you Lana for working out um, the exact numbers that are gonna be passed. Um, for the general admin fund as well for the fire territory fund. Generally speaking, again, that's on paper, it's less of a cash problem. Uh, and that's because of the capital expenses that had to be made and then reimbursed back to the township, so. That's just a heads up that that will be coming, um, outside of that, nothing terribly notable, um. Uh, we have not heard back on our excess levy appeal yet or our um, appeal for emergency borrowing that would allow us to um, create an additional levy, and so there's some um, back and forth on that, but we're waiting to hear from the state. And we haven't gotten that back yet or approval of our budget, so, um, neither of those things, um. Yeah, neither of those things have come back yet, but um, I've been answering any questions there, uh, facility that you guys saw, Fruit Pantry has expanded its hours at least through the end of the year, which is great, which you talk about, you know, whatever you guys wanna chat about there, but that's going really well, I didn't get our numbers from today, but we're kind of, we're doubled, we're about double of what we used to be. Uh, since the SNAP uh, crisis sort of started. We are also, um, one thing we are talking about doing is doing maybe a meal, and so we've been exploring this. And what we're circling that we have not nailed down yet, but we're circling the idea, so uh, speaking of facilities as well, the William Street Building is having renovations done to the kitchen, we're not paying for those. A grant was, uh, a chief of guy told you on that. Real Services got a grant from Community Foundation and some other folks to renovate the kitchen there, because they're using it as a congregant meal site, so every day, seniors come in there and have you know, lunch for free, so, um, that work is ongoing, but our thought was like, okay, well, these guys are already serving food, like, can we just give them money and have them serve more, so what we're arriving at is the idea of doing once a month a meal from the senior center, like a four to six sort of thing, and coming up with something that's like make make it not just about feeding hungry people, but invite anybody who just wants to have a conversation and maybe meet their elected officials. Or meet some folks that
Right.
are involved, like a listening, like a community in conversation, the kitchen table sort of thing. One month, maybe we invite the sheriff, we invite the chief of police, come ask questions of it. So we don't have details of that nailed down yet, but that's kind of as the outcome of all the conversations we've been having that we thought might make a lot of sense for us to do.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe it expands into twice a month, I don't know, but looking at making, whatever we do, we wanna create a schedule for the whole year. So it's planned out and we can put it out there for the whole year, um.
I like that idea.
Yeah, so, I'll keep you updated, but we're open to thoughts or um, ideas you have.
That would be a team thing with
The senior center? Yeah, basically, we would pay real services for the food, they would cook it, and they would serve it, we would go out there with the staff and help serve, like that, that our role would be to pay for it and to come out and staff it.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, they have a calendar, so you know, whatever you come up with, you know it.
So, yeah, the next week or two is when we wanna nail it down, so that's, we we would start in January. So that's starting in January, for the whole year, these are our meals that we're gonna be doing, you know, everybody would know ahead of time.
And I like the idea of inviting different groups or organizations, you know what I mean? Because one of the things that often happens is, like now, say, the mayor could have mayor's night out, but for a lot of older people, they don't wanna drive in the dark.
Yeah, and we thought this would be more like, this is casual.
Yeah, right.
Like, let's just come have a meal.
Right.
And then, like, what do you have to say, we just sit and we eat together like you would a normal people.
Right, I agree.
Like that, like, breaking down, so then, I mean, there's a lot of possibilities, like when it's March or April. Like, hey, we're bringing in on some tax professionals in here that do, because we're actually partnering with um, a nonprofit that's gonna provide free tax services.
Right.
You know, that's a scam in the hood, that these folks ain't a lot of money.
Could be two thousand, could give us two thousand bucks.
So like, during tax time, we could bring in a tax person, like, hey, hey, no, like, we'll do your taxes for you, we can show you how to do that. So it'd be nice to be able to respond to whatever need is going on at that time, um, if we have something standing, that people knew about.
But I'd like us also to in, they may not be able to come, cause they're working or whatever, but to invite, like, you would go there. Um, and then invite other people, because as an older person, I'm getting where I hate to drive in the dark.
Yeah.
And uh, I know a lot of people.
We thought the same thing, like, we'd start at three or four, so that if you wanted to come and be home by five.
Right.
No problem, yeah, exactly.
Getting up at work or whatever.
But then if you wanna come out to work, we'll stay till six, you know.
Okay.
Might look like.
Yeah, I like that idea.
So, yep, that's one thing that we're flirting with, um, see here, um, facilities, at the next meeting, I'll have a holiday schedule for twenty twenty six.
Okay.
Uh, for you guys to take a gander at, also our board schedule, we will need to set, because as you recall, we gotta do a reorg meeting. Like, right, first week of January, but then we'll set the meetings for entire year of twenty twenty six, so that's something uh, to be on the lookout for. And then, on the other, on the community side, we probably have several things, but um, we are also planning a holiday giveaway event. So we've gotten all these donations and like, it's been amazing, and then people walking in hitting us checks, big checks sometimes, and then the carpenter showed up. And we're like, hey, what do you need, we're gonna go spend twenty five hundred dollars on you guys, and so, what we thought was there's not, we're not, we asked on the call last Friday, and the answer was no, nobody does any holiday meal things. So we thought, what if we did on a Sunday afternoon, just a drive-through holiday meal giveaway?
Oh, nice.
Between now and then, we could spend our time, money, packing boxes, so that we're ready for it, a hundred boxes minimum, and we're flirting between a hundred and two hundred.
Mm-hmm.
And we pack all these boxes, and from like, two to four on, this is our holiday party, we all come out, we can put on our Santa hats. We give out boxes, people only have to get out of the cars, they can just come, but like, if we want, if we end up with some cookies, or we end up with some, uh, we were thinking about maybe adding a present element to this, if their kids come out, or maybe it's just candy canes, or we wanna introduce some sort of kid element to it, and you know, people wanna get out and hang, if it's a nice day, maybe we do that, but otherwise, some sort of holiday giveaway. So right now, we're looking at the second Sunday of December, and we're talking two to four.
That can keep people looking, come after church.
After this week, our priority next week will be creating the graphics and getting that out there for everybody to see. So, um, as soon as I have that, I'll look look you guys in on it, but I think we're like this has been a this week or late last week thing, so I think we're honing in on the plan now, but, um, if you got ideas how to make it I'm trying to contain it and not get too crazy, I want a reindeer, I want a reindeer, they won't let me get a reindeer.
No.
Although I need a reindeer.
See, see, here's the problem with the reindeer, right, see, they they kick.
And they poop.
It, it, and they won't, they they might gouge you, man, they might gouge.
Well, alright, they say. But.
Yeah.
We need other ideas.
Fake one.
I'll, I'll be good, you know, Santa, we were talking about a Santa Claus being out there, like, just make it a thing, get some music going.
But that's here.
Here in our parking lot, if the weather's nice, hey, great, but if it's not, then it's just a drive.
Ready, they have all the fixes, maybe some extra stuff there, yeah.
Well, like banana boxes, like a lot of stuff, like, you you give, you know, like a big box.
So you can, so you can make a feast.
Yeah, feast, and or or meals for a few days, you know, whatever that looks like. Um, so that's a big one, what are the other communities?
Well, that'd be good since we can't do coke for kids, I mean, like, we'll be able to.
Man, she's just going like, people are very, very supportive of, so where I was going with carpenters.
And see how nice.
So with the carpenters, I said, well, why don't you guys buy, we'll be, we, they wanted to spend twenty five hundred dollars, so I said, why don't you go buy five hundred dollars worth of food, Lana and Jamie. Tell them what we needed, and and I said, then give us the two thousand cash, and then come out on that day and help us, and we'll put your banner up, like this was sponsored by the carpenters, we're gonna get the fire truck, maybe you'll be out here, the firemen will be out here in just two hours, you know, kind of make a thing up. But if you can think of some other ideas, how to make it better, we're just, we're still sort of putting the plan together.
Let me know when you come up with a plan, I think it's a great idea for a great event, uh, in the heart of the city since, you know. You can't never get full staff downtown, and neither one of these cities again, you gotta go all the way out by the airport now.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, 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 I'm so.
You heard about that?
Oh, no, no, does anybody know how many buses go out there, only six buses.
Yeah.
And two of them are before they open.
Yeah.
So it's basically only
Four?
Four.
And they run on the hour.
The shitty thing is.
No, but worse than that is, it quits at, I think it's ten thirty, and it doesn't pick back up till two thirty, so.
But you go out there, now you're sitting there.
Yeah, yeah, you're you're stuck there.
Yeah, you're stuck there, it's your day, we've been sending people to Mishawaka since the South Bend one moved.
But Mishawaka's moving.
That's what I mean, that's my point, that was like a
They're going back to the way they were, I told them twenty five years.
We've been sending them there, cause it's closer, and there's much, there's more buses.
Right.
That would go, so now we lost that.
Uh, I wrote to the Tribune and asked them to try to do an editorial on that, because when they kept saying where it was, it finally dawned on me, that's the Blackthorn.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, and it's three hours in the morning, it's seven thirty, no, it's, it's it's like seven some, yeah, that will get you there, like, maybe fifteen to twenty minutes before it opens.
Mm-hmm.
Then it's like ten thirty, I think, then it's two thirty, three and four, something like that.
Maybe if we announce we're looking into sponsoring a bus, the city will just do it.
Well, you know, they gotta do, you know.
But I mean, seriously, if you have a four o'clock appointment, okay, you're not gonna be able to get a bus back.
Yeah.
Probably, cause you still have to walk a little bit about
Yeah.
two, three, I don't know who thought this up.
I do.
I was gonna say.
I do too.
People who don't want anyone.
Same people that thought of moving the B and B from downtown to the south side was a good idea, but leave Mishawaka open for twenty four hours with a kiosk.
Yeah.
Same people.
Yeah.
I just think it's, it's, anyway, and I also mo- Maureen Bauer, and I asked her to find out who made the decision, and did they know how the buses ran?
So, well, I mean, here's the thing, South Bend has someone on the transport board.
Mm-hmm.
Right, uh, even though they like to say we have no influence on the buses.
And Mishawaka has somebody too, I think.
So I think we need to start raising that in the community, like, South Bend needs to get out there and say, hey, this is there needs to be more buses going in this location at this point.
You know, I hate to do this, but I will help, can you, um, Jason? You know how you did with the food, and kind of spearheaded?
Oh, yeah.
I know you don't need anything else, but I
The bus thing?
Yeah, I really, I'll help, anything you need to help, because I talked to some people, and they're like, this is going to be the biggest mess.
Here's what I'll do, so I know, I know Transport already made accommodations to to even do that bus line at all.
Mm-hmm.
So I, and Amy Hill told me that, she's the former executive director, but she's since moved on.
Yeah, especially when they did um, career academy out there.
Be budget crunch too, that transport is
They're hurting.
Well, they they they're, they get probably tax levy, they're
Right.
Yeah, well, they put a bus route right down California Avenue, but there's still one on Portage. I mean, like, it's, it, I specifically don't understand why they put a bus driving down California Street.
And this goes back to what we were talking about before, though, even us thinking about doing a shuttle to get people able to go to the senior center, that kind of thing. Um, trying to find some other community partners that might be willing to do something to make it a little easier to get out there, I don't know, um.
Yeah, I mean, I I I'll start with Amy and ask, like
Okay.
Was there?
Like I said, I hate to put something else on you, but I I know, this is going to be the biggest mess.
Yeah, it's just that one is, man, I just, yeah, I don't know what.
Well, what point of moving it out there was to make it inaccessible to people.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But I tell you what, I mean, my my thing is, even the buses being better, it sucks, I mean, it's way out there.
That's that's your day.
Yeah, that's your day, yeah, I agree.
And since most people are working multiple jobs and still can't afford food, like, you know.
It was just the stupidest thing when I saw.
I mean, you know, there's a whole half-empty building sitting right downtown that you could have moved both those spaces into, but, you know, I can see what it said, that's parking is a problem.
Yeah, well, it's cause it houses a call center, and that's why when I got on the horn with them, I offered them, I said, well, just move move a service center and bring it here. We'll let you be here for free and just transfer your people over here, I was like, that sounds like it's budget neutral, and she was like, oh.
Oh, I wasn't even talking about our building, I was talking about the county city building.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's half empty, it's
It's half empty.
What's happened?
County will fill it though, you know, planning to move all their, consolidate all their offices in there, but either way.
But yeah, I would appreciate you doing this, because
I will, I'll find out.
Cheryl, if you can send me some details, like, I'll actually start putting that out there too. I think people are very aware right now, obviously, of how necessary SNAP is, and if they weren't before. Um, I think it's something worth putting out there that, once again, just without actually cutting budgets, they are cutting excess, right?
Right.
Uh, and we can't really let that get by, like, people need to eat.
And I'm sure Mishawaka, you know what I mean, that makes it really bad for
Where is that one moving?
To the same place, they're closing it, yeah.
No, that's what I mean, we were, I mean, it was okay when Mishawaka, we were dealing with it, it sucked, but now it's just, oh, it's terrible.
And I can tell you, from having, people will call and ask me if I take them someplace, cause a relative will say, oh, that's too far, I can't drive all the way out there.
They might not have the gas money to take.
Yeah, and they don't necessarily have the gas, you know, the relative now wants fifteen dollars.
Maybe we start including like a free pitchfork with every application for assistance, I mean.
I know too.
It's just crazy they moved it out of down the
Tar is expensive.
Just a little cup of tar, you know.
Yeah, I I I, when I saw it on the news last night, I didn't know South Bend had moved.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and when I saw it, they talked about South Bend moving, I was like and that's when I looked up the bus route, and I actually typed in where you can type in to find out what bus goes there.
So this is
Cheryl.
Give me an idea about
You know, I'm a power, right?
Uh, give me an idea, this is the only place people can go to get her?
If you need to get documents or Really, it's
You know she don't cost.
If you wanna apply, there's an in-person interview usually to to get approval, that's where you have to go. Honestly, the big thing is like, if you have problems or questions.
I mean, you know she don't cost.
Now it's not just SNAP and Medicaid, and Medicaid has gotten rid of their vendor that they were using to manage all Medicaid, uh, recipients. They've now just fired them, so now if you're a Medicaid recipient, you gotta go to one of three anthem or. Anthem and two others. Other, yeah, Care Source and like.
Uh, MDY. I thought it was MHS.
No, that is MHS is the third. So either way, you have to go, you have to switch to one of those, but you're, I mean, your kid, like, your provider might not be in your network anymore, so if you have questions about that and you wanna see someone. You need to go to the office, make a skip, make an appointment, so it it's.
That's in that same office then?
That's all handled by the FSSA.
Yeah, and maybe it'll get better, but when you're looking for specialists. Okay, Care Source had fewer specialists in our county, cuz I've taken people to La Porte County.
So and they're saying with the everything that happened with SNAP, the every there. There's going to be a requirement that essentially everyone reup. Like, I've I've seen some argument on whether that's just a a routine thing that happens every few years or if this is just their new attempt.
They started doing that earlier in the year, they started sending letters to people saying, you know, there is a process where you have to be recertified anyway on a regular basis. But it's like they're sort of on a whim coming through and saying, yeah, so that would not surprise me at all.
Well, yeah, I just I.
They're talking about every six months and it used to be once a year. Used to be once a year that you had to certify and uh, and now it's every six month, there are of, yeah. Now they're talking about every six months.
It just seems like a waste of money to me, it doesn't seem like it saves anything.
Well, because what they found out is that people. Missed the letter that was sent out, because maybe I moved today. And I don't let them know for two weeks I've moved and the letter came to me the day after I moved. And uh, so yeah, there are a lot of people that have been kicked off of, um, uh, hip because of that.
Well, and that's a common problem for people that are in poverty is. Transitory housing or other things, they get moved around a lot, so all the letters they're supposed to catch and resend out, they don't get.
Well, they learned that from the whole voting process when they were sending out those things and people weren't there to get those letters. Where you do their thing and they like your cattle.
They kinda messed it up in the mid, in the mid nineties when they should have left the one welfare office in the middle of downtown South Bend. But they decided they thought they'd make it easier for people and divided up one on the west side, one on the south side, one on the east side, the problem with that is. People are always move, moving, they don't generally own their own homes and they're sometimes, so they're constantly, their cases were constantly getting transferred. From place to place to place and that became a mess too.
Can you imagine the people in Oceola, how much? They're gonna have to get over there, right?
The solution is putting them back in downtown South Bend. That's the solution, but.
You're only gonna have one site downtown South.
Looking for solutions, Joe, what?
Well, they rent every so many years anyways, they don't own anything.
Anyways, like, there there might be something to look at though, for people who do need assistance getting out there, trying to. See if there's something we can set up once in a while, um, to tell people, like, cuz if it's. Like, if you're, if you have a day job and it just doesn't pay enough, like, there's just no chance you're gonna be able to get out there, right, like with those hours, so.
The biggest problem is a lot of the, you can do a lot of stuff over the phone, but like you said, is when you have. Questions.
Well, I mean, that's something we might wanna think about for.
I had a quick question. Okay, um, on this sheet. I just noticed it. Okay, on two, three, oh, one, two. Okay, where, uh, uh, two, three, oh, one, three, it says fuel five thousand and then it says fuel oil. What's the? The two oh, two, three, oh, one, three fuel.
So that one is supposed to be fuel related to property inspections.
Oh, for the person driving.
This is our expenses, this is assistance.
Fuel oil. Tenure is never something that we've done. But we leave it on there in case somebody. Cuz I'm told there are still.
I think somebody came in this week, but didn't.
What, are you serious? No kidding.
But I heard that there was a minimum, so like, they wanted like twenty five hundred dollars or something, you know, the company and it was like, uh.
So yeah, that's what that is, Cheryl, but why, you know, where are you taking fuel from? Where are you appropriating fuel from?
I was wondering, cuz you've got the cars.
Probably general. I should have probably taken out a poor relief, so probably just coming out of.
Can you check and see where there doesn't require a minimum, minimum?
For what, fuel oil? Oh, like what what company said that?
Yeah, what company is?
I have to ask Aaron, Aaron and, uh, they were up front with Aaron and, um, Monique.
Cuz we need either talk to that company. Or figure out something, cuz there are a very few, but there are a few places that still have fuel oil. Um, property inspection, we haven't had any that we've had to inspect?
No, those are the expenses.
No, we inspect all the time, uh, it's just that we haven't had inspections related, I think. We, I was just guessing when I created this, we didn't know. What that would look like and so we just, we haven't had any expenses related to it.
So it's just been the cost of the person going out and doing the inspection, which has rolled into.
He's 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 his job is the facilities manager.
I see.
So he does that and then everything else.
I don't have any other questions. Oh, uh, it's not a question, it's a comment. Okay, on this page where it says Portage Cemetery. I think if they sell Portage Manor. We should get some money to help for the cemetery.
They've allocated from their ARP funds fifteen thousand dollars to help with the fence.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so that's.
That's from the county, right?
We would get.
Then I'm okay.
But that's it.
And are we thinking it's gonna be about a thousand dollars, a thousand, ten thousand a year for upkeep?
I think we should put that in there.
I I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a capital improvement would be much more, which we'll we'll need at some point, but. Yeah, I mean, that would cover the mowing and the cleaning up and all that kind of stuff, if we wanted to pay someone. Do any kind of surveying or anything, although the county did do a pretty good job of that, but, um, yeah, I we think that's realistic.
Okay, and my other, this is from working at the library, okay, um. The record, so if somebody had a relative that's buried out there and they wanna know where it's at, do we have those records?
Yeah, we can give them a general area. No markers anymore. So yes, we could tell them the general area.
Is the survey done out there?
Derek Dieter called me actually yesterday about this, it's, they could transfer it to us at any time, I I don't know what, I don't know what's going on there.
But we're not taking the little pathway stuff, just the cemetery. I don't think I had any other questions.
These are softballs, man.
Oh, food pantry.
That one that has to be.
No, 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 a long time ago, we had talked about trying to get cultivate. To give us frozen meals.
We do, we get food from Cultivate every week. We just, we haven't done the meals thing. Um, I don't, I can ask Jamie about it, but we get food from them every week. Yeah, then, um, so, yeah. Stan's closing was a great boon for us, um. They, uh, they're cleaning out their warehouse, so, um, a lot of people, you know, we ended up getting some stuff from there. Um, I do wanna give a plug to Eat at Yellow Cat as much and as often as you can, cuz they could not be. I mean, these are just good people there, they brought us a huge load of stuff, the one day, she gives so much to the community. And then he, they showed back up an hour later with like forty pies, because Jamie was so excited. Because he was like, well, you guys were just so excited about the five pies that we gave you, we decided to go back and buy buy more, and that's kind of where we started talking about the holiday giveaway. So they are just, now they're doing this huge Christmas giveaway the day after our thing, um, and I'll let you guys know the details of that. They have, they have two hundred kids from Madison, Marquette and Monroe. And they bring them in and and all morning they do Christmas decoration or cookie decorating, they give them food, they give them this toiletry bag. Um, so if you're off, I'll I'll let you guys know, cuz I said that we would come out and help them with that, because they're just, she's just awesome. People just like. I can tell you, Boys and Girls Club, Sabino, did a nice, um. Fun or a food pantry drive for us. The Boys and Girls Club, Sabino?
It was one of the schools, right?
Zakowski Construction did a ton, just sent us tons of boxes from Amazon and Costco.
We started, how nice it was even.
Can we make a some kind of big sign to be on an easel?
Everyone? Yeah, that's what we've been talking, we're gonna do handwritten notes.
So the other people who are coming to get food.
We had people write write thousand dollar checks, yeah, yeah, so, what we do is too, is we circulate out notes that everybody on the staff signs and everything to get, so. But yeah, I can't think of them enough, can't do anything.
Where are we here? Um, I was gonna say, there's something coming up at the well that I wanna mention. Uh, they do this quarterly, it's called the Free Market, where they just like fill their entire. Like back warehouse area with free stuff that people donate to come and just take what you need or or leave stuff, whatever. Um, but it's something that every, every time they've done it, like, it's just packed. Uh, and they get picked over and just have mountains of stuff that they keep putting out. Um, I was just thinking it might be an interesting thing to have someone reach out and see if they could use any help. Or if we could maybe have some of our stuff there at that time, so people can get connected with other help they might need. Uh, it's December, this time December second through December seventh.
Can you send that email out?
Sure.
I do better if I get emails and I paste it on the refrigerator.
Yeah, I mean, it's a week long event, they're closed on Saturdays, but, um, it's a week long thing that they do. Uh, and it's always like I've I've helped out a little bit here and there, but it's always interesting just sitting there having a coffee and watching all the people come through. Um, but it would be good if before that, I mean, we thought of some stuff to share over there that maybe they could.
Our services and.
Yeah, so people who need help with energy or rent or. Whatever, um.
Still don't know.
I mean, it's it's basically a giant thrift thing, but.
You never know when they're coming through, they're like, oh, you could help me with my, cuz there's not like a whole lot of places helping, especially like with rent or with, yeah.
So just wanted to bring that up and and mention it as something that maybe, uh, we could get in touch with them on. Uh, also, we had talked before and I kinda emailed everyone about the the idea of having a supporting nonprofit with the township. I was thinking we might wanna have like a separate full meeting to talk about that. Uh, maybe see if they wanna, the Saint Joe Community Foundation wants to come out, cuz there are a limited number of people who can be useful on a board. Right, for that kind of thing, so that's why I was thinking it might be good to talk with them and see what they think. Um, it's also a consideration that since we're a political entity. And, you know, once elections change, all that work can be wiped out by a different group, right? So it's it's something to consider.
Um, I sent everybody to say we might wanna look at the model that the African American Community Foundation uses. That their stuff is administered by, um.
Few different groups, I I helped them with, uh, uh. Uh, I forget the name now, uh, another group that I was kinda helping put together a year or two back and they run everything through the foundation.
So the foundation just holds the money though.
And they help administer it in the sense of the financial, like they keep the books.
Right, but I mean, who, I mean, like, who would, who runs it?
Okay, like the African American Community Foundation has a board. But all their board does is two things basically, try to help raise money. Raise money for it and help decide who's gonna get their grant money.
Oh, actually, the other group, he went through, uh, the YWCA, but Community Foundation was the other, so, yeah. Like, they act, they they call it like the backbone agency that handles the accounts and the reporting, and that's where donations go. But all of the money is actually governed by your organization's board. The the thing about it is, right, like, there is always a concern, are you competing for the same grants, are you competing with the same attention, right? So that's why.
I see.
I was thinking it would be an interest, it it would be wise to just talk with them first, cuz I think we do kinda get involved in the same kinda stuff a bit.
Well, who's on their board, do you know who's on their board?
I think Jason here.
Their VP now, and then Rose Meisner is the the president, the executive director.
You can see who's on their board. You can see who's on the finance, the their board by looking at their website and I get, I get their letter. Their newsletter, and it's on the newsletter, but I know somebody who was one of the founding members of the. African American Community Fund or Foundation, and I just know. That what they did is they solicited, that's it was Virgi- Virginia Calvin and her husband solicited money. From various families.
Imagine they wouldn't, they would probably be open to it, it's just that's where it's like, for who, who runs the thing, that's that's. You gotta find good people to run it, they're gonna have to recruit the volunteers and manage it and they have to do all that then, the board does.
No, not, uh, not with the way the African American Foundation.
Well, but this would be for the pantry, so then who runs the pantry?
Well, not just the pantry, the the idea is this would be supporting the pantry, this would be supporting things like codes for kids. We're talking about like trying to help organizations of sports for kids in the community, like, they could be doing all of that.
Yeah, Friends of Portage Challenger.
And you would need it, you would need an independent board, uh, so when I looked into it, you need to have an independent board. Um, it can't be controlled by us, right? Um, although, like, we could probably have, uh, should have representation on the board, obviously. Um, but it's just how you, there's there's a few different rules since it's just that mix of government and nonprofit. But, yeah, I mean, that board would be the ones who actually do it, so in drafting the rules for it. You would need to make sure that kinda some of the things are focused around the the projects that we, you know, want them to be doing.
And that's where they can help, that's where, that's how the South Bend Foundation helped the African American. Whatever it, they're called, they helped them put together the rules.
Oh, sure.
And, you know, and, you know, that kinda stuff, but I know what they concentrate on is fundraising. And deciding where their money goes, you can go on the, you go on the Community Foundation, right? You can click on to the African American and you can see how much money they have in their trust, I'll call it. And how much they spend each year and what has been spent on. And who the board members are.
What the front, I mean, the VPA have, right?
But 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 they don't.
Nonprofit board that then, and that then supports various projects.
Yeah, all different things, yeah.
And I I don't know if you could set up so that basically they're primarily reporting, re- supporting things going that. We are doing, right, or.
Oh, I would imagine you could.
Yeah, you can. And then you can always include something.
Just like Friends of Portage Manor, I mean, like, that's where, Friends of the JJC, I was on that board. And we would just raise money and we would, you know, buy the kids Christmas presents and pay their fees for sports and stuff like that.
But the only reason I suggest we look at that model is we basically would not be. For lack of a better word, you know, writing the checks and and filling out the. What is it, nine ninety fours and all that kinda stuff.
Sure, that's what he's saying, you need that separation, yeah.
So that's, that's something we might consider next year as kind of a a goal, maybe a goal for the year. Just because with all of these other cuts and everything, like, it's a lot of work to be done and we. It's a lot of work to be done and we gotta be creative on how to try to do things at this point. That also does give us freedom to like escape some of those statutory limits on what government money can do that.
Sure, no, I agree.
Alright, and I think that's everything then. Is there any, oh.
We can talk about that after the morning, that's a reason.
Alright, uh, so is there anything else in other business?
No, do we need to know anything about the fire territory?
No, I won't do all that unless there's an update.
I don't think so.
Holiday dinner.
Yeah, we can talk about that at all times.
Alright, well, is there a motion to adjourn?
I can more than that we.